Alright, thank you and welcome to the July 28th, 2020 Village of Buchanan Workshop Meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you so much, everyone. Okay, so we do have an agenda for this evening. Um, some of our workshop, uh, agenda items are, the first one is review of local law amending Chapter 21119 at the Village Code. And yes, we've had many discussions on this and yes, we did pass, um, part of the law, but there seemed to have been some problem with it. So, um, we, we have the finalized copy again, um, so I'm just going to open this up if there's any other, items that need to be addressed in this, uh, now would be a good time to discuss that. Is anyone, is, is anything needed to be added, taken out, or is everyone had a chance to look at it and feels comfortable with it? Because we are going to be voting on this on the August 4th meeting next Tuesday.
I'm doing it.
All good?
Uh, Nick, I think you're muted. Nick, I think you're muted. I'm okay.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, Nick, now we can hear you.
Uh, the text is fine. I just have a problem with the off- offenses. I think it's way too, uh, I think it should be a little harsher. I think the first offense is just a warning. I don't think that should even be in there. The police can often do that in practice. I think they have the discretion. Just give that, but if it's going to be a warning, will that be documented? Otherwise, how do you know that the next time is the first offense? I personally don't think, I think that the, um, the warning should be up to the discretion of the police first time. Um, or else unless it's going to be documented so that you advance to the next step. I think that the fines that are listed should all be doubled.
I, I think we already talked about this, Nick, and we all agree to what's on the paper.
And did we agree that there'd be an official warning?
Yeah, I remember that.
Will that, will that be documented? Otherwise, it's pretty pointless if it won't be documented.
Uh, I can make sure the police document it as part of their report and keeps a report of what, um, uh, properties they actually gave warnings to, and then that with the second offense will be an automatic violation. Yeah, that, that, that sounds good.
Yeah, alright, so then I can assume you guys still all agree, disagree with me that fines should be doubled? You all still disagree with me?
Yeah, unfortunately, thank you.
Majority rules.
And Steph, who's, who enforces this? This is, this is trailers on people's properties. This, this is the building department, isn't it?
Correct, that's correct. Stephanie, that's correct. It wouldn't be the police, it would be the building department. They'll keep a document. And the building department has a record by each property. And they'll document it, and the documentation, if there's a violation, they'll go back to the property card. And they'll realize there was a previous warning and then a violation will be issued after that.
But this, this includes the parking on front, on front lawns?
Yes, yes, because that's part of this, uh, the Village Code.
Okay, so that's, that's building department too, not police?
No, yeah, I think once it's on the road, if it's a vehicle that's parked on a road or on the road, then they have jurisdiction to that. But once it's on a property, it's.
Okay, and what if the vehicle is, is, what if the vehicle is parked on the grass immediately next to the curb, which is the village right away, not the private property?
That's a good question.
Uh, Stephanie has a good question, but like if somebody has a sidewalk in front of their property, they, they cut the grass, they're still required to cut the grass or shovel the driveway. It's still their responsibility to maintain that property in front of them. So unless Stephanie feels differently, I would assume the perspective is to issue a violation.
That's what I would think as well. Thanks for the clarification.
So if somebody's parked on a sidewalk, like we see over on 9A quite often, that wouldn't be, that should be the police, I would pick.
They should be parked on a sidewalk.
People pull up halfway sometimes with two wheels in the street, two wheels on the grass. Who gives that ticket?
They should be getting a ticket because parking on sidewalks is not allowed. It's a sidewalk, not a.
Right. Or half on the, half on the road, half on the grass. I would think if the vehicle is, is like that, the police would have jurisdiction of, no?
If it's half on the road, give it to the police. If it's on the yard or in the grass, give it to the building department.
There you go. I, I agree with that 100%. Yes.
And by the way, I added a G, Nick. I'm sure you read it, that says there shall be no parking on any front yard because the other areas were kind of, I don't know. If he, so this one, I assume everybody read it, so it's very specific and that's in addition. That's not in their agreement.
Okay, I thought it was good. It was on the penalty part that I, you know.
Yeah.
But text is fine. Text is good.
Are we still offering, uh, doing the stickers or some sort?
That's in there.
Yeah, that's, um, yes, it's on the second page, number, number three.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Got it.
So, so that now should, we're going to send out a letter because you can't rely on everybody getting it from Facebook. Unless we do a separate insert in the newsletter?
We could do that.
That's why, I, I think that's the reason also for the warning. That way people say, I don't, I don't, I don't read the newsletter. I don't knew what's going on. That's where the opportunity to give everybody at least one warning to let them know, then we'll get hit over the head the first time. But definitely we'll put it out in the newsletter, we'll put it on Facebook, we'll put on, and we'll also start to put on our, on our webpage.
Okay, so we can move on to the next item. Resolution, we're going to have the resolution declaring the renovations to the Veterans Pavilion Project. And we're going to be having, it's going to be a type 2 under the CEQA law. Um, we have been waiting a long time. Um, our contractor has been ready to get started, but we needed to get approval of this. Um, oh my gosh, I don't even remember when the application went in. But it's been a long process. Um, it's a, it was a lot of paperwork. Thank you, Marcus, for filling that out. Nothing is simple when somebody is going to give you $125,000 to do some work at the pavilion. So, but it wasn't easy. It wasn't like, you know, can we have $125,000 to repair our pavilion and suddenly you get the check? So this has been a long process and, um, we're almost there, so, uh.
May I ask, was it a requirement of the grantor?
Yeah, what, what happens to a process is the, um, the state a number of years ago has contracted out with DASNY, the dormitory authority, to supervise all their grants now. So the dormitory authority, um, has the authority to review and document all the grants. And this is a requirement of DASNY to have a secret process. It could have been required from the state, I don't know, but that DASNY does require it.
That makes sense. I, I was wondering, because I was a little surprised with, uh, with, this is predominantly maintenance and repair work, that there would be a, a seeker, uh, review required, but now I see.
Alright, good. So if there's no questions, we can move on to the next item. There's a proposed tax tertiary settlement, um, with equity enterprises. Mr. Levy has, um, given us a recommendation. He's the person that handles our tax certs. And, um, that will also be on the agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, as everybody, uh, should everybody, uh, let you know, uh, this is, the good news is, this is the only tax cert that's on the calendar for the remainder of this year and there's nothing pending for the next year. So the good news is that this might be the only settlement for the next two years. Um, and the, um, settlement, he highly recommends that we approve it. I think it's a good deal for the village. So if there are any specific questions, I can't answer them. I can get it to you by the next meeting, but if you read his memo, I think it was pretty clear.
I trust that the work, that the, the professional did the best they could for us for everything I've read. I, I don't understand why we owe them money in 2015. Was there something that changed after that?
Yeah. Yeah, I think he said in his. Yep, I think he said in his memo, uh, maybe it's page two. I think he gets into a discussion about the market value in 2015 was four million.
Right.
And the rest went to two million and three million and there was some sort of anomaly in that year. I don't remember what it was, but I think that's what, I think that's what he was trying to say.
Right. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I remember Steph, that is in that, um, that is in his, uh, his note to us. You're correct, why it was different. So yeah, I did read that today. Alright.
Right.
Good with that?
Yep.
Okay. So our next thing is we have a resident, Joseph Dina, 173 Westchester Avenue, that is requesting the use of the pool parking lot for October 2nd, 2020, um, for, for his wedding guests to park there. Um, you know, it's village property, so what is always required, anytime village property is used, that there has to be, um, approvals from the board plus insurance is required, just like anybody would use the pavilion. Same process, you know, that they have to, um, have insurance, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I think, I think that was nice that he asked if he could use the village property. So, um, I don't see any problem with it for him using the parking lot that day.
Teresa, where is, uh, at 173, right across the street from it?
No, if you're looking at the pool, the, the village parking lot, it's to the left of it. It's the house to the left. Because the pavilion is to the right and they're to the left.
Okay.
And I do want to say that in cities on here too, they, um, they did all the insurance requirements. Our broker reviewed the insurance. He had a number of change, changes that he were recommended and they met all the requirements. So we're fully covered for insurance.
Okay. Discussion of the budget, uh, budget transfer of $20,303 from contingency to, um, well, it gives us the line, other expenditures to cover the cost for special camps regarding Indian Point intervention. And what this is, is we had agreed, uh, with the town and with the school district to become, this is for us to become an intervenor, with the proceedings now with the energy and the closing and, and tech and all kinds of things going on. I really thought it was important that we became an intervenor on this because let's remember when the plant was closed. We were not one of the three men in the room. We were not an intervenor to the proceeding, so we had nothing to say with the sound of the closure. So going forward, I, you know, I thought, and I, and we all had agreed to, uh, to do this, um, that it was important that the Village of Buchanan was, uh, part of the process and was an intervenor in the process.
The school also paid a portion of this legal fee?
It's, it's been split, well, I, by a third. The town pays a third, the school pays a third, then we pay a third.
Okay, I mean, if we had an IMA, we had an IMA, I, I would think that the, uh, you know, being that it's kind of hard to weigh who benefits, you know, the most, I guess that's the best way to do it, a third, a third, a third. We're smaller, but we're going for taxes, blah, blah, blah. So I guess that's fair.
Yeah, it's just important that we have, the village has a seat at the table and has to stay in something. I know it's a lot of money, but. Okay, so, um, Marcus, do you want to go into more of the public TV access update? I, I apologize to, uh, the residents. Our access channel has not been working. Um, there's been some issues with that. And, uh, Marcus, if you'd like to go further with that.
Uh, sure, I, I don't know how many people know, but, um, due to the COVID virus, a lot of school districts have been doing a lot of work at the schools to try to do a lot of construction work. Uh, I guess the high school also did, is doing a lot of construction work. And during that work, they caused electricity to the building, they're moving equipment. Um, and during that process, the way our cable line goes for public access, it goes through the school and then from the school it goes out. Um, so that's been down for some time. Um, I understand that it might be up now. I'm not sure. So if somebody can let me know about that and what the quality of it is. It might go down again, because the school is moving the equipment into another room. So it's not, it's not us, it's not Cablevision, it's a requirement of the, what the school is doing on their own property. Um, at the same time, I did ask, uh, Altice to look at, create a separate line directly to the village. So therefore, we have, we need, we need control the situation. I have to worry about what the school is doing. We can control it by ourselves. Now again, this was done many, many years ago, when they first put cable in by the previous company before Cablevision. And it's been on the same backbone. So hopefully we can, we'll be up, up and running soon. And then hopefully we'll disconnect our connection to the school and we'll go directly out and then we'll avoid this happening in the future.
Thank you for looking into that, Marcus, because we've had other times where we've had issues with our, our, um, access, public access panel and it was due to the link to the high school. So hopefully, you know, we, we, you know, not hopefully, we need to make them do that. We need to force them to do that. I mean, that's ridiculous that we cancel up the high school. We should, you know, we're a municipality. We should have our own, our own access to that.
Yep.
Well, and they should have at least informed you that they were putting that out of commission. An email, courtesy email or something.
Absolutely correct.
And that's the Cablevision channel? What about FiOS?
Uh, they both run to the same location. Absolutely correct. So that, yep.
Yeah, they merged going back, what, about six months ago? Uh, so there's no like Verizon station, Verizon One and, and FiOS. Now they merged into one station. Channel 29 for people who have Verizon.
Yep.
Okay, so for the next meeting, we are going to have the approval of the next always. Um, there's going to be a public hearing, um, amending the 21119, the trailer law. Uh, resolution declaring the renovations to the Veterans Pavilion to be a type 2 CEQA, CEQA. Resolution authorizing tax tertiary settlement. Um, also Joseph Dina's, uh, use of the parking lot. And the contingency, um, the $27,000 coming out of contingency. And also Marcus should have some more updates hopefully by next week with the public TV.
I, I got a question about the school. Can, uh, it just, I mean, it seems inappropriate time. I was just noticing that their budget last year was 60, 67 million and change, and now this year it's 80 million? Um, I, I just don't understand where, what are they spending a 16% increase on a bud, in their budget? And when they can't, can't even pay for the 67 million because we're losing that energy? Uh, is, uh, is, is the school district gone crazy?
I can't answer for them.
I mean, does anybody have any knowledge of that? What, what the hell's going on?
I don't know.
No? Okay.
They probably have, uh, they probably have, uh, board meetings, maybe they're having electronic board meetings that are, that you can access, you know, to ask that question.
Okay.
That brings up a good point, Nick, because, um, the executive order was extended, oh, I believe tomorrow, um, to have the Zoom meetings, the, um, the municipal Zoom meetings and, and public meetings. Um, I don't know, Marcus, have you heard anything today of any, any other executive order? If not, let's, uh, I, I know the virus is on the uptick now. Not only, it's all over. It's, you know, we're, we're still okay in the village right now. We have one active person. Um, but I don't know, let's, let's keep an eye on the executive order. Uh, I'm not sure what next month will hold for us. Um, I don't know what the kind of brings. And that brings me into the seniors have asked when they can come back to do their senior meetings and the community.
Can I just interrupt for one minute? Teresa, I'm sorry. It's Stephanie.
No, no problem.
Marcus, am I wrong, or does that executive order extend to August 5th?
August 5th, that's correct.
So it's not tomorrow?
No, no, I'm sorry.
I thought, I thought you just said tomorrow.
No, you know what? I didn't say that. It's August 5th.
Okay, yeah, it's August 5th.
The next Thursday's meeting is on Zoom.
Yes, yes.
Meetings on Zoom, September is up in the air yet. I, we don't know. Let's see what happens. Thank you, Steph.
Just wanted to clarify so people didn't think next week's was going to be in person. That's all.
I, you know, I prefer the meetings in person, but, uh, you know, under the circumstances, we have to, we all have to be careful. And we don't want to violate any, any New York state laws and get in trouble, so.
Uh, when we go back in person, guys, you're going to have to put pants on.
And I'm sure we all do. Anyhow, so the seniors, like I mentioned, uh, I am understanding now is the town of Portland is, um, starting their seniors again the beginning of September. Uh, I think it's a, I, my personal opinion is I think it's a little too early to make the decision for September right now with everything going on. Um, so I, I, let's put that on the agenda for the workshop in August. Um, so we'll see where everything is and what's happening in the world at that point and then.
You know, even, 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 you know, that, I have a hard time imagining that. I could understand why they want to do it. Of course, the social, social stuff is so important. I'm going, you know, I, I think we're all probably a little, you know, going a little nuts because of the lack of, uh, some of the normal things we do, especially social things. But, um, seniors still are, uh, one of the more vulnerable populations. And, you know, how are they going to control that as far as the cleaning, as far as the distancing, as far as the masks? So while I appreciate that they'd like to do that, the thought of it is a little disturbing to me.
Yeah, there's a lot of it.
Maybe they could do, maybe they could have their, um, their meetings while the weather's good at the pavilion and stay, and do it outdoors. There's much less transmission outdoors. And New York right, right now went from one of the worst places, the worst place in the country, to other than like Maine, I think we're probably one of the best places to be in the country right now.
But we want to keep it that way and we don't want.
Yeah, but maybe they could, why don't they, why don't they look at doing their meetings at the pavilion with the tables, you know, a little spread out? And masks outdoors is much safer than, it's the indoor space where the air doesn't circulate.
But we've, 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 um, stopped the use for the summer of the pavilion also, so, you know. But, you know, let's, let's err on the side of caution and safety and, and let's have this conversation again in August, uh, at the workshop and, and see, see what's going on at that point. You know, I know everybody wants to get back to normal, but then also we, you know, we don't want anyone to get sick after all this time. We want, want to make sure everybody stays well. Um, we have a senior in the village, 100, on August 20th. And that's Josie Baberk. And, um, I will, isn't that great? She's, she's.
Awesome.
Amazing. She's an amazing person. Um, so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be working on some things. Um, also the seniors will be working on some things. We can't have the typical birthday party in the, in the, the room on the second floor in the community room. But, um, I'm sure we can do something special for her. It's a special birthday.
Very good, very good.
So what else do we have? Or does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up?
I'm good.
Oh, interesting. I'm sorry. I apologize. And I'm going to bring this up at next, the census. We, we are way behind from where we were, um, in 2010. Every 10 years, the federal government does the census. And that, that number that comes out is very important to every community. It has to do with federal funding. It has to do with state funding. So it's important that we get the most people as possible to fill out the census. It is not a difficult thing to fill out. And I know, um, that Cindy and Sharon in the office have, have offered to help people to get the census done. So we have been fortunate. We have a bunch of signs that Marcus was able to get for us. So you're going to see signs going up around the village. Anyone you see, anyone you talk to in the village, please ask them, have you done the census yet? And why this is important, because on, after August 11th, you are going to have people coming out into the village, out into every community. It's not just the village. And the people that have not responded, they're going to go door to door to try to get that information from them. So much easier to spend a few minutes, get the census done, and you don't have to worry about somebody coming to your door.
Teresa, are those people going door to door, are they state workers? Are they county workers? Are they federal census workers? What are they?
They're, they're people who have signed up and are going to get paid to agree, uh, have, uh, to go door to door. They've been trained on, you know, what to do. So it's not just necessarily federal or it's just, they put an advertisement out for people who wanted to be census takers.
Yeah, and they'll have, and they'll have photo IDs, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Have you seen the signs that, um, the highway put around the village yet?
Yes, I've seen them.
Okay, so we have extras. If you would like one for your yard, I'll deliver it.
But I didn't. Work it, Cindy, work it.
I'll, I'll take one if you have an extra.
Absolutely, okay.
Absolutely.
Alright, good.
Thank you.
How many extra do we have, Cindy?
Oh, there's probably 20 left.
Okay, good. I'll take a few.
Yep, okay.
Alright, good, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so just everybody you see.
Let's put them all around Rich's corner there because he's very visible. And so when the motorcycles go, uh, by, they can see it.
Good, good to go, good to go.
Okay, what else does the board have here before we go into executive session?
Um, next, uh, next week I will be out of town. I will be attempting to Zoom from, uh, B and B. I have a, a B and B for a week. And my intent is to be in the meeting Tuesday. Um, if I get to my B and B, it turns out the wifi is really bad, I might have a problem. But I, my intention is to be there and I will certainly let you know if the wifi is not going to handle it. I'll have to try, I'll try to do my best.
Uh, Nick, turn your phone into a hotspot that you can use cell phone cover, that you can use your cell phone for everyone.
Oh, okay. Can you send me, can you tell me how to do that?
Sure, absolutely.
Turn my phone into hotspot? Like what do I do? Sit on it or something?
You knew that was coming.
You went for it, Marcus.
Yep.
Okay, Nick, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Hi, Teresa?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's an article that was in the River Journal, uh, which, uh, basically talks about, uh, Riverkeeper missing the point on the decommissioning of, uh, Indian Point. And it's a very interesting article. I'm, I'm going to have, uh, some copies made and shipped out to everybody, uh, but it's.
I got that today in my mailbox from, uh, a resident. Bob Ingenito had, uh, left it in my mailbox. Yes, it was, it was an interesting article.
Is there a link?
Yeah, you go to, uh, River, Riverjournalonline.com.
Okay.
Riverjournalonline.com. And the caption is, "In its attack on Indian Point, Riverkeeper misses the point."
Was that written by, uh, anybody we know locally?
No, it was a, uh, professor out of Queens College and a electrical engineer. I don't know where he's from exactly, but it's a, a different, uh, perspective on, uh, what's now occurring, uh, especially on the energy side of the replacement part of it.
Well, what, what Riverkeeper promoted was to, uh, shutting Indian Point. And they were saying renewables, the renewables, renewables. But in fact, what's happened is, and let's also say Indian Point, zero carbon emissions. So they pushed for the closure. They're an environmental group. But what in exactly happened is that, um, a gas, two, there's going to be two gas-fired plants that are going to replace the megawatts out of Indian Point. So that was not environmentally sound thing to do. And it was kind of sold that renewables will take the place of it, but in fact, that is not the case. There'll be two gas-fired plants. One of them went up on April 1st. And the other one went, Unit 3 closes next year. So not good for the environment, the fossil fuels. So not a win for the environment, not a win for the people.
Teresa, do you know where, where those plants are going to be located, the gas power?
One was, uh, geez, um, one is right off of 84, uh, just outside of Middletown. I can't think of the name of the two of them. I, Dwayne, in that article, it specifically has the name Dance, Dance. It's, it's, there's two, two plants.
Uh, Cricket Valley?
Cricket Valley, yes, yes. And the other starts Dastemer. I can't pronounce. Cricket Valley, yes, yes. And the other starts Da, Dascomer, I can't pronounce the name, but.
Okay, but was.
One, uh, Orange County, one of them?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Was, was, was there one in Duchess or no?
I don't think it was Duchess. I have to, uh, you know, I'll get that information to you guys, so you know.
Thank you for bringing that up, Dwayne, I'd like to check that out.
Yeah, okay, the only reason I'm saying it's interesting is because there is a gas shortage. Uh, part of Westchester County right now cannot, it's a moratorium on building, White Plains, New Rochelle, that area of the county. They cannot build anything with gas, they're gonna totally electric because there's not enough gas in cat, in fact, they're, in fact, they're bringing down containers. Uh, god, uh, truck containers with gas, compressed gas in them, and feeding them into the gas main. So therefore they won't want to get gas in the winter. So I'm just bringing it up because there is a gas shortage at the same time, and now they're gonna actually put more strain on the supply. I'm just bringing that up.
Well, you know, it's in lower Westchester County because they weren't allowed to put any new gas lines in, so a lot of that gas shortage is, yeah, and it's, I don't know. That's not good either, but, uh.
Yes.
You know, it's, there's a need for, and one of the things in that article, Dwayne, too, that I remember reading is. They said that they felt that they could, um, by people, um, conserving. Conserving their electrical use, that would, that would help with the closure of Indian Point. Let me tell you, it's hot the last couple of days. I am not, for anyone, shutting my air conditioning off. I am not conserving, okay?
You know, there has been.
If I want to conserve and sweat, it's on you.
There, there is a lot of energy saved over the last, say, ten, twenty years because we've gone to LEDs. Because appliances are more efficient, um, you know, in general, because there are efficiencies that have led to savings. But that does not allow, accounts for the fact that there's also been development, more houses. So while you might be saving in certain ways, you're adding to the need in others, you know. So people like to, um, use statistics to their advantage, but you gotta look at all of it.
Absolutely. Okay, does anybody else have anything? Okay, uh, we're gonna be going into executive session. Um, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual and negotiations.
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.